I have a special waiting to order. Do you have any of those?
Yes.
Too much to probe, do you, Gina?
Second.
Here, call it outside of the fish.
Sure enough.
You've got, I've got, you did, you want to throw that here. I'm just regulating the ordinance. Negative. Come down. Who starts? How do you do that? Give me, make you four one up, look at them getting this morning, I had a whole lot of time for it. But, uh, we have a tire ground, and when you get one for twenty, fifteen, sixty thousand bucks, you save a twenty thousand dollars a year. We've played the stuff within three years. And when I say that, I ain't adding up the fire control truck for that savings on fuel. It's a, I said, I remember I was in the night train. It's twice as far than Concord, it's like four hundred and forty mile an hour trip.
So, yeah.
And where it's two hundred and twenty ballin' anybody, it's exactly twice the double trip to Concord's entire. And then Concord, we're giving, they sit in the ladder and play it in nine, six, thirty something ton, they gotta get rid of it. Or we get rid of dogs in thirty-one feet through. And it does something bothering them to take and put down a little bit more. So, if you cut out all that, try and make it to Concord, so we're getting more out. It just, I may not make it be more efficient, I think it'd be a lot better. But, I didn't even do a lot more homework on it, I just wanted to see what you thought about it, if we won't be moved forward. We'd save that most of that, that rig. I wish I could, I wish I could, Paul's service comes, so thank you, and let's tell them right there later about these upsides. I'd leave a note, something like that. But, but, as I remember, I'll say, which is twenty thousand a year, I'll walk it in like six months. Well, that's in, uh, dump things, fuel, labor, it's not fire control truck. Fuel, labor, conduct things.
Is that the seal from the?
No, it just cuts it all right up, which basically drives the fire and takes the ball right.
Oh, wow.
I just throw a little bit more homework on it, I don't know. I ain't worth a keep play on the rig or nothing like that. It's not like a big tub ground, or I don't even need to move one of them yet, and even, I'm laying on the way to Jay, I'm just straight up there. But, I hope no, it's more like a, more like a brush ground with bigger open to pump. You can pull videos, just get time, watch the paper. Now, they, some of them cost two hundred thousand dollars, like commercially, on track and by the way, we don't do that. They, they're going, it's, uh, it's a feature horsepower. So, you know, it's forty inches wide at the top, so that's taking big cars. It's twenty, around fifty-eight pound dollars, you know, what's this morning. Like I say, I, I need to really, I can't do a little more of it. I don't want to, it's all, with food, or even what we do, I will. There's a saver, so I'd like to, I'd like to save a month for cheap. Save the truck, I were going to Concord, accident, right, that doesn't happen. Too much of a breakdown, it's a little more crowded to a ton together. Paul's service, can we tell one of his down, I was coming to my?
Yeah.
He, uh, he said it would go sign on his gates, he ride on tape, but it outside the gate, on the sixty-five, and they can say the morning. And he said if he, all he had that was a name on it, by he, they, fifty or nothing like that. But he would like to sign, or say this is Paul's service property outside the gate, he put dogs in, you really say that?
That, everything's that, or is that just?
He in the store, and that's everyone but I, just.
What's?
No, his name is Bob Mates, I don't know, just work from up there. And I just had to mean it's off to him, that's a new.
Cause I got, since there's a special, it should start to know through the courses, don't, I think, really, I just toss those off a lot.
So, Paul's service, it's good, it's fair, probably, uh, fair. You know, about, probably, back then, through my side. He also wanted to know what size, because it was black, and what was planning, so he just, just let it know, because he was some, well, he could put a place back there, he was some, that lacked him, actually wasn't actually, before we touched.
Uh, Paul's service, not so big. Probably, all along, and, several.
And glad, true.
Any wants.
I don't know if he would put sign in, if he turned the right, or like. He said he wasn't no hurry, but he liked to know, we go along with us, know that we're all gonna show them lax, you know. Like they were, for what he does.
Now, we got the fence signed, you know, the fire creek stopped, so that's the next step, we're moving forward.
Yeah. I would get him over the morning, just saying.
Paul's service, move around here. Someone brought, uh, to one mechanic.
Not asking you all back, but I'm just asking right on, you know. Get back, but if we just showed up.
Now, on, on, ticket wise, do they turn that into, as, as their phones, or is this kind of like in the channel?
See, then on their land, it'd be there, it's there.
It's late, we're getting legal, doesn't know, fairly, plans on this, dollars to one.
Good plan, one.
Maybe the reason I have to try and, get to do a strong loans.
But, yeah, maybe the land, but, but often, that is easy.
Some labor, and it's in that investigation, and I can just tell my own place, like, hello.
I bet it has some, I haven't served in morning, people, you're doing rock, just wait, though, again, today, every morning.
Be kind like you would.
I hate to tell you what you would. I'm doing my calling, I'm telling you, you can't do it, he's, he can't, we're in a kitchen, he's great.
That's it, it's wrong.
He is. He's old, made it. When he told me he was old, made it, I don't say him, it's called, you know, sort of, I would hold it. Yeah, Bob Mates is the name. Really, it's patients, that would never say that. We've got to call back, sign, the sand, the fence. But, your defense, we'll do about any time. Building or something, probably, a hundred dollar place.
In the building, we have one building available, we got him to put the top at four hundred stone, or whatever, we'll take that one out from here and take it up there. Cause that one would need to be manned. On, on the day that y'all need to be open.
I say, yeah, it's, I just want to make sure that here, just, like, build it in the main, on fire.
Yeah.
You're all saying it, too, more, maybe unreal, you, bum out, again. Well, without, cause it's just, don't ever.
So, why no, Mike, get friends installed, do they give a bail, I have six weeks. That's a good game?
Yeah, it's game, yeah. We already got, well, just get fire, cause it's on the building, so, fence is the biggest hurdle.
Once we get the building out, then you give us our, our, after the building.
If they might get out firing, we get it, we move it.
Next, this is a question, I have a, or discussion. I have, or have, um, those, quarters.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it was exempted, everything or every charge, got thrown out, so, I mean, the ordinance needs some work to it.
When y'all call the sheriff, he doesn't do anything?
Not a big, oh, I don't know, he could do that. We've got cameras, but you have to put a sign, say this, we just got another man to die. So, we're gonna do that license, you know, for this, though.
If that person you mentioned wants to go to the dump, and see what's going on, especially on Sunday, they actually need to be there by twelve o'clock, so if he's talking about the max, it's out there at twelve. So, he gets, pick up truck, put bags. And about a month ago, I was out there with him, getting a little hand, the old monster all done. And he had, like he said, fifty or sixty bags, that Sunday, and he gets there around noon, mid-afternoon, so you can get the gates open, cause you can't get the gates open, it's blocked. You have to physically be there and see it, I know, it's been pictures of it, but be there to see it, to see how severe it is.
I've not been, good.
This side, this side, this side, no, no.
You ever seen?
I know, you kind of drew that twenty-eight, so I brought it on the church, it's on the side, it's on the side, that twenty-eight, a little wide side of the car.
Does that happen on Sunday morning, because all the rentals, people leave?
It's local people do, I mean, it's just, clearly, they have to be late, so I don't stop, I don't have a car.
Well, shouldn't we recognize that ramming happening, rentals is a big part of the economy? So, should we accommodate it, should we make, instead of saying, don't, when you need to leave, check out your rentals? Shouldn't we say, hey, you're meaningful part of the economy? Let's accommodate, Sunday mornings.
It's not paying for the, uh, the older relationship, I guess.
The nation has trash pickup, it's our burden of business.
Trash is, but you don't have to worry, I'll pay it, not myself.
I'm claiming, it's the claiming people, it is, well, we're claiming people, what it's, thank you, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm talking about, like, follow the, follow the guy.
Right. But, but I'm fighting, claiming, not Thinsburg, Snowburg, or, I don't know, San, uh, San David, I don't remember.
Hey, the one that's ten.
Yeah, it's, it's named, but I'm telling you, ain't doing, it leaves, better, I've got, really, it's, it's the claiming thing, which is it.
Uh, last week, about two minutes ago, I was leaving, I saw, I was seeing Jeep full of trash in it. He was about to unload it, there was no dumpster, and I pulled up and told him, you know, this is a trash dumpster, and he told me, he went to his Airbnb, they said, take your trash to Land screen. So, these people that own Airbnbs are aware of what's going on. There's no sign for anywhere, telling there's a dump on East Buffalo or anywhere else. The guy followed me, cause I had to take trash out, I told him, follow me, I'll take where it is. But nobody knows where the dumpsters are. And people who are leasing these Airbnbs don't know what's going on, it's obviously, like, no offense, subscribe to Grand Star.
Right.
There's no communication, signs anywhere, but any dumpster sites are, or shit about shelters. I'm one of the people who cleaned up Land screen, uh, Ron and I, and got to be ridiculous, dumping the dump with trash. Now, I'm not getting paid for it, I, I stopped, I just picked up the cans, and all is down there.
Right.
But it's got out of here, it's Land screen, it still is. Ron took some trash down, and dumped last week, if people go dumping that.
There's kids holding that one.
Yeah. Like I said, Ron and I are taking care of smaller stuff, that, that filing cabinet as well. I'm not gonna try to lift it or anything else, but I'll take the small trash down.
That, that's a little far, for maybe, maybe get it off, to add it to, free it up, so I don't think it's, that's more, and then you go aside, and they lose it. If they're.
No, it's not.
But, they don't really, if, Airbnbs don't.
No, the Airbnbs don't, but it is the responsibility and property owner, to let the people know, and a lot of dumping at Land screen, it's just.
It just ain't no dust hour, so they should've said it on the ground period. Ain't where I know they should've said it on the ground, but that's, that's, that's.
I got the sign, that says, two and a half miles, stay Buffalo, keep driving straight.
I'm waiting, I'll be off. Yeah. We put one up, we might put one up. We get a good quality sign, and one that you posted in your movie. They got blown down the wind, driven over. And I came around back, and got the dumpsters all left, I put it, I was running, I didn't know where you are. I just, uh, I'm gonna write, it's a big nice steel sign, big nice aluminum sign, let's go.
Yeah, first, gonna sign.
I need to, you know, if you got all these socks, figure that, or you don't always, you're driving, you're.
Well, I mean, it just seems reasonable, like you're Airbnb, how, or B R V O, or whatever, that you can have, or it's a skin, but fifty dollars a month, so I have to trash it out. So, I mean, realistically, then you're not doing that on your customer, or in cleaning, I mean.
We got a question about a tire. Like a tire writer, is that right to define pieces?
You know, most black folks, I think.
Okay? I'm sure you've been a little, probably, probably sell, capitalized, polish, it's a success. Anybody that accounting bag it itself?
Still have a steel in it, it's an entire, and it gets that steel, like, you go buy a whole machine, get that sound, and it's a pretty, pretty feeling.
Okay. We have a question, just please, sir.
We got an answer, but on the, what can I figure out? Who, what, where, how, in charge? What we know, how we in charge.
It's another county's, um, fees, I think, is what you're gonna have to really look at. Including them. Like the household bag of garbage, I get that, you know, that maybe you set yearly fee for those type of, um, haulers, I mean, if it's, if it's just household garbage, then they, they know that if they bring something outside of household garbage, that's bad, then they have to pay for it.
So, there's solid waste fee schedule here, that was adopted in two thousand, that's six, three, with us. I can't find them then.
The fee was revoked in one of them, it's a small one, um, and, and that was when they had start, starting charging like forty doll, eighty dollars per household.
Yeah, I see this, I would go to the unit.
There's one section that says they get away with all the fees. And then I had that one from Raymond in nineteen ninety-eight, that was the utility bees, her truck, did you see that one?
No.
Not necessarily, I don't need your way, but.
You should have some one of these, it's a little, hard to confuse the way. Actually, I read all this, but it didn't make any sense, I'm saying that.
Yeah, on that one, it just says that, uh, the method of assessment and collection of solid waste availability and usage fees in the county ground, saved or tried, hereby deleted in its entirety, and replaced with attachment one, which is attached here, too. And that's the one we're doing.
Yeah, but, so that's current, why, is that what we're saying?
The current unit. We have not done that.
Mommy.
What guy, what big guy thinks, hurt, see?
I suppose, are there single penalties, so can we go about, saying, you know, collection methods, or are there single penalties? Without changing this, or, then that cannot be modified? As far as the collection goes, are the single penalties? Would we have to modify? Any of this to determine what collection method we can use? Like, whether it be, tax garnishments, wage garnishments, attach it to their tag, whatever. Can we just decide that separately, or does it need to be a need to be there?
Well, it needs to be in ordinance.
The collection method?
Yeah, it needs to, it, at least that needs to be in the ordinance book.
What's the margin issue, by the way, collecting these fees to make these payments more? Crown and land, it's not, it's not more, or so, is there a, like, uh, like, just assess the payment for two thousand tickets, and if they don't qualify, and I will go about, what's the best?
Are you saying for violation?
Not the violation.
I guess just send them a bill.
But if they choose not to pay it, then can we attach it to their taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Flags are non-property owner, can we go after personal property, like, their car? They can't renew their tag, and stuff like that, that kind of thing?
You know, I, I would imagine there's all sorts of ways you could do it, the question is, how much of it are you gonna actually put in the bank? That's the question. Um, because i- if you, for example, if, if there is a property owner, I'm, I'm skipping your question here for just a second, but if you, if it is a property owner, and you make it a lien on their property, and you enforce that lien under statute forty-four A, you could take their property away, or sell it. Uh, if it's a lien, I mean, that's one way you could do it. Uh, but if there's just, if they don't own any properties, it'd be really hard to collect. I don't know that you can put a lien on a motor vehicle, I don't know whether the Division of Motor Vehicles allows that.
Well, it's not an actual lien on your vehicle, you just can't renew that tag until you pay your tolls. I mean, other cities do, so I just wondered what the national percentage of that money, because that would probably get more, so that, you know, that's gonna be more broad than trying to attach to property taxes. Cause just about everybody who has a car, everybody's not gonna be a lien owner.
I don't know the answer to that question, I'll look into it, my inclination is that you probably can't do something that is the domain of the Division of Motor Vehicles.
Not that I'm told, you follow them, drive them on their road.
But it's true, like, say, Mecklenburg County itself cannot, but it can be. So, I wonder, I just wonder how that works in comparison.
We had, we said, they're, like, have videos, or cameras, or?
You know, and they got together, I said, we're gonna sign up at noon.
They only set for, they're gonna video, basically, or possibility of attack, and stuff like that.
Yeah, I just, I'll set it for the right on that, when they're doing that, the gate part, you know, I was early, thinking about getting through, through tag, and when they're just dying, camera, playing, it's, ain't no internet, none of it, like, just keep putting over. Camera, like, there are many buildings.
Well, is there, is there any way, eight minutes, uh, somebody, there might be a stop, you know, it's a right. Is there any way to get good enough quality cameras, that's just there, cause that one's the one everybody seems to want to see open all the time. If it's properly video surveilled, then, and, and we have the people to actually punish people for doing wrong, would that, that one, what I would think, be the best tip for having, like that?
We got it, we got cameras up, or you can say, you can say it higher.
Would adjust them, would adjust them?
Either way, it's a team question, but I'd say you have to have a hard, all we can. It really, it's so valuable, we all know each other, but with somebody you don't know, you really complain, well, that's strange, to be honest with you. Basically, that.
We must have been, uh, we must.
Oh, they are, and, and say this, when it's true, you're trying, you know, part of the painting, let on the, it's true, or not.
There's some, I mean, like I said, the fun, on those tall brothers, they can get eight months.
Right.
Always. Every time, and they will not let you ever get your tag, she's gonna take care of it, as a fact, proof. But, no matter what, like, they always get it, so we got it, and that's, I mean, some of the contracts, we don't, but. Yeah, they may have been. It, the way it's, it's, it's pretty bad, yeah, it's supposed to be ninety-five up, uh, to the two thousand, and if we've not looked at it, I, I seem to remember the last time that it was, uh, I think Lynn actually was commissioner at that time, and they actually crucified him and, uh, Claude, and, and Dale, over it. Um, everybody's screaming, punish people for it.
Well, this is, oh, we got to, this is eighty dollars.
Captain?
Eighty dollars, you know, right again.
Yeah.
Lost all this place with the merchant.
But now they threw the eighty dollars out in the, in the amendment. But then they said attachment one.
Which includes that eighty dollars. The eighty dollars was, was removed, and, so, it started over. Actively, was increased to, uh, the eighty dollars, you know, like, we increased to another word, we, oh, second, eighty dollars, a couple people didn't like the eighty dollars, you know. But, when, when it's recent, to make the adjustment. Wait, they're not understanding. Because everybody, that, all the, all of them, involves, which safety or anything, they can pay the, those funds actually went to sanitation, keeping sanitation, fun.
Sure, you can't, sure, you're seventy-five, we would, we would leave it, we're, it does got later, leave it's place, it's about, uh, you go camp right in the yard, see if you find one, or is it?
Okay, so, like, any one of the class, you know?
Wow. But, they, they're growing, they're up, they're probably, they're nice, though.
You actually had one place, Steve, that had boughs, probably go fall out, had, had eight boughs. That's how it came about, first, it's, it's, I think, I don't know, when you told somebody, it's, uh,
Yeah.
But, that's way, that's way.
And definitely, like, Clarence, that's, that's.
It's probably, uh, that bird plot is, I, there's a, probably, they didn't leave the price, or worry, go play in a park with a bird, if he goes out, like, towards a living place. Even there, out there, there's an old house of five, two, and they start. Put a plant, it's bleeding, it. So, he does, make sure, just drop it, and get the jar, and knock it off.
I'm not sure you will have to be, but.
That's the right attachment one, I mean, I could go for the minutes, in the old books, and see.
That's the right attachment one, I mean, I could go for the minutes in the old books and see if attachment one was included to make sure. There's a lot of garbage comes out the house, both you and Lily.
It was, I don't know if they were trying to charge. Churches and.
The churches was exempt, and they weren't supposed to be, is what. That was brought up, somebody was exempt, and you cannot do that, you can't exempt one because of the ordinance, and that's what was happening. Certain. Places was getting exempt from any type of fee. And across the scales, which we don't have anything to go across the scales, this was a yearly charge, so. It was just a made up. And that's where we're at today.
What's it's going to do? This is a amendment, it's not only act. You go. This is basically, but it won't, yeah, we got, we still got the ordinance. Nobody got, um, medical, well, the media.
No changes have been made since I came back in oh eight. To the, to the ordinance, and I don't know what happened for the ten years I was gone, but. There's nothing been touched since oh eight.
I remember. This, and it's been ever since, every. Uh, change of, uh, like, sure, it was, I'm not touching. If you know you've got it from the place, I'm not touching. Now, basically, what we've got.
Well, I guess one section of the ordinance says that. Community sanitation director and organ employees, sanitation department, and organ, the county manager of Grand County, where the environmental health specialist of Grand County Health Department is authorized by the county to cite law leaders or offenders of this ordinance for violation of the same. So we don't, we don't have to rely solely on the sheriff, would we? We went through that, made changes.
Yeah.
After, maybe through, for a bit of that, that, they were called, I think, they were paid fine, but not, um, there's no way that, there's no going to stay actually, but.
Unless we put it in the ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I don't think we would have to really do it at this hardcore, I really think after a few people get spot for violations, but. People are really asking him to walk. But we have to lay it out. But if the sheriff's not going to touch it, I think we discussed making it creative.
They told me the last time, they got about a warning ticket. They'd be just six months, if you catch for that six months, you have to drive another one to you. Good problem, very likely, something, go up, you don't ride the ticket, something, they took me up our, before I put me into queue. I did the advertising, but I didn't have a lot of hours before I figured out. And then they just sell what is. Came back and pitched to the day.
Sent some bills that were in the garbage bags at Lono, or these Buffalo site, and I received a phone call from one of the ladies, and she said, I've never been to Grand County in my life. I don't own a home there, but I got a bill in the mail, and it's got my name, but this is not me. And I said, well, and she said, what was it found on, and I said, it could have been an Amazon dogs. The men's stores sell Amazon packages that they have somebody's address on, you see where we're at? If it's got somebody else's address, but I seen a whole list of letters to these people, and I had one phone call. Saying they're going to be fined if we catch their garbage on the outside of the fence, this was the one warning. Exactly.
Same thought happened out here, we talked about, about giving credit, and we got, we just, I don't know who to do, so we don't. If that, that, you're going to go skills away, and where, oh, you do get your ass, I guess, probably getting out of life, so. Do I build, I'll have to, I didn't mind, I didn't make, it's fair, you do it for. That is start, credit is start, which is.
Well, her name was not Heather Ryan, her name was Ally Hill. She told me before to look at her taxes in Georgia, that's where she was at, to prove that she was not here. And the lady had her address in Charlotte, wait, it's Charlotte, not Georgia, in Charlotte, she's using her address as Heather Ryan. And the real person is Ally Hill.
I held her out, yeah, I know.
Yeah. I tell her I changed all my passwords and everything that I have that day.
Keep charging them on, so they're working, it's like, I always do it. Worked at his time. Really, he was basically, it's just a mix of problems.
Hey, when this, take out those trash, we know, that's pretty much it.
All right.
Yeah.
I agree with that, actually, they don't know. I mean, I ain't going to say that, obviously, we're wrapped, but it's a lot of trouble, too. As soon as rest gets, we're going to have a back, physics, we're playing, I mean, I don't blame the taxpayers, I'm agreeing with me, that's what I think, it's a good deal to talk. I ain't saying that, we're, because that's your situation, they're holding, they're holding, they're going.
But some of it's.
There will be some kind of thing for, uh, it's a bit.
It's still for, so I mean, there's still has to be. So, so, okay, I'm going to handle that, so we're not running to issues of, must be, maybe you're a favorite designer in the future.
You add on the property taxes, separate entry? I've seen counties do that, with school taxes.
Yeah, they tried four, I don't know, public secretary, five, five to eight.
Just for anybody that owns a house or business, they're going to be in whatever field, eighty dollars, maybe a tab goal.
It's been tried before, I, 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 this will feel, I, I, the, the decision. I think it's sent, I, my point of interest is. But if you add that, are you going to take it out of the village? Or you just going to dwell without ours, or just take, try, we just, we just take?
The river come by peace, it's not very, you're not talking about very, it's peace.
Oh, okay, so you're not going to add to personal, uh, like, non-comerical profit tax? You're not talking about non-comerical profit tax? I'm not playing with anybody, like, controlling. It's already in the village.
I mean, we can say it's. We're not saying they need five, five cents to do the rest of the garbage or anything like that, but yeah, we'd rather carry out, like, that, no other place.
The item, on the same minute, by what?
Same minute, by, she ended with white, fighting. Yeah, if I could do that. It's all we can do, so, if you send it to right a big dollar beer for everybody.
You're not.
I don't need to say, uh. He had a town with. Business is tough, I haven't seen it, it's, like, you're trying to load back garbage.
You got anything down there, you're like, the big compact, that's. Forty yard compact, twenty, five, six thousand pound every week.
But I was following, following up, please, I feel. Following up, please, I'm. Marginal trash, it looks like, there's your trash.
It is bad, it's, it's a part of the community, I think.
I saw it in my house, it's.
Right, I can't, I haven't, I haven't done that for a while, three, ten, since you came, two years. First, like, it's loud, it's, it's murky. Pretty much, yeah, it's, it's, sort of, still, it's raining, so, well, then, it's twenty dollars to an hour. But you're working, it's Saturday. Then it's five, and then it's, uh, none of that, it's probably empty.
So like, the Jersey County, they're referring to the residents, is that? I'm going to be driving horses or permanent sticker or something of those sorts.
They all have, they're coming around, they're, it is. People argue the best, like, you know, in Georgia, there's probably forty thousand involved, I don't know, I think, credit. It's less like, I have to pick up that, you know, being, why, some of the, you recognize the product, but the ones you can do, don't get, kind of, not much change. If you work for somebody that lives in those state, then you should debate, like, the fact that, if it's ready, it's all. Some of them fight, some of them, yeah.
Well, the compact in itself, it needs to be justifiable for whatever they're doing, but how it was, who they're working for.
I did. Well, which name, God.
So, I mean, you don't have to figure that into their deal, don't figure that into their estimates.
I'd like to talk, I think, I thought of this, actually, yeah, like, maybe it was like, everything, you know, just, yeah.
Well, I mean, I can't just go there and post a car, I live inside, I don't know, we can't charge the liar for it, I mean, that's.
Ford's up, the song, some of the girls standing, um. Those, her, her ladies.
I'd like to go figure ordinance, I think, brother, it's just a suggestion, they're spending all the money on more gates and stuff, but two men in a truck, different shift, and we're looking at you, and we're on the base here. Staggering up through the week, not knowing where they're going to be showing up.
Right.
Not big, it's single hatch. Now, we like, big subpoenas, fire, great, so put the gate, let up, put a man in the truck, and if you make it home. First time, this, twenty-six, two feet, second time, five hundred, I don't.
All right, yeah, it, it grows, each time.
Pay for what they're doing wrong. And all that.
Yeah.
They have to stick, because.
That's what people are doing, if they're abusing it, just like, there's no consequence. I mean, but, and they start, when you start hitting them in the wallet, people aren't hearing fast.
And then, well, I hear, I'm rich, darling, I have to give you, say, get it all brushed, and he's looking at her, he's, I'm a taxpayer, I'm taking that, I'm like, what that's doing, you know, he's a red. But he said, I'm going to buy, I'm going to lay, I'm buying, you know.
They shouldn't have to.
Didn't have to, the.
Shouldn't have to, that's not a bad, I mean, this is where.
Then they got here, and you're flying, right, makes it like that all the time. And you be holding the pink, you say, from where that was in your job.
Well, when you get a garbage free, so. The fourth. I assume we're, talking like a rules, I want to play.
No, but. I have consequences, and I'm worse than the rules that apply this. I mean, it's part of being an adult. You, you learn as kids, you get, you get shown in slant. Hang on, I'm not going to do that. For me, a couple times, until you, uh, say, I know what's causing that, I'm going to do that, so, but there's no recourse for what they did now, so, why not, don't be worried, you know? If you, yeah, I would. I'm trying to feel, we should see what it takes to be kind of affection during tax, if there's any possibilities to that, I'm, I think that's going to be our best. Collection of all.
Have, have you all considered, um, the statute that says it's a misdemeanor to violate, uh, the county ordinance?
Yeah, I was wanting to get it, I don't know, it's a file, it's all, five and thirty days in. Jail, uh, stretching.
But he does not understand, they live to be, they don't have a desire to handle any of these cases.
I don't know, I don't know whether that's a situation or not, I, I know that quite often they just dismiss cases as they can. We could talk to them and find out if they're going to prosecute.
Put all the fines on the new justice.
That is a great old time.
That's not, that's not prosecute.
That's a good one.
That's really not that, yeah.
Good one.
Oh, well, I've said, you, they live, well, they're tall, took something, they went spoke, they're long, they're very nice, and they're out, and the truck was in, and I'm, excuse me, they sent an RT for her, she had to play.
That's a change, you probably, you want to find your cover, I mean, that's.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, that's how they make their, if I were to hold like that, you know, nobody would point her, your son, I think your son would definitely care, but, but.
My brother just. My brother just found out. That, that's.
You can't even hold back, that, that's what I mean.
Yeah. I mean, that would be perfect.
If you could wash it down. Then it's true.
If people have, they may not, they don't see.
So, they, naturally, they have. Um. I find it to come from where I live, or if it's near, it's.
They, like, resident Hollywood, town, they charge two dollars a tenant. Our problem, my problem on that, though, we're gonna have more paperwork in this one. You can give me all that, we just charge, like, the resident Hollywood. A hundred dollars a year, there's something showing you indiscriminate, fifty dollars to your wife. Then that'd be fixed, still charging the regular businesses, like, the other day, the university, at the L A O's net, and then he made. He must be more like, well, he's like, like, he's, like, he's fine.
What is, what is that, what's the fee for that, or which one of the businesses?
It isn't, uh.
This is.
It's taken by, uh, it's a, it's a, of course, it's a payment, it's a day, they'll return, but, like, the other day, plus that's, probably, it's like, they're, it's fifty dollars.
No, I, 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 I don't. Small office, seventy dollars, medium office, seventy, twenty-five dollars, large office, two hundred dollars. Small restaurant, three hundred dollars, large restaurant, fifteen hundred dollars. My boy, he's renting for, for industrial, about eleven hundred dollars. My ring for, maybe I was a hotel, nursing home. Same, I didn't fifty dollars, forty dollars a night, and then, we just had everything, and we had to face it, that's my question.
Like tires, we're supposed to, by a state, charge, pay the individual anything over five tires a year, and we don't charge.
But we don't have a lot of, well, I, I just, son, when places, places better hear that, that, you know, that's, that's, if you say, you retire, and I know a lot of it, you know, tricky, you can bring them home, you can, what he can say, he's bringing them home, probably, from where they're from. And that a lot of them, they're like, they're buying a lot, just to dump a mile, I think, to fuel, I think, to light it, potentially, that's on much tire ground, just trying to pick a little out.
What's the best way to charge? If, uh. How, what? How to charge?
Capital, like, can, you're gonna get their pay, I don't know, or, they're, 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 this, uh.
No, sir.
And, oh, the action camp is gonna get hurt, I'm just saying.
I just take any, any more than should, then, then, you're charging them, so, so, it's, 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 it's. Perfect. Ordinance we have. Is. Uh, correct.
It's, it's, Ronnie.
So, basically, what we can do, just leave land.
I would think so.
On current ordinance.
Yes, I would prefer that, you start.
He was situated, he's like, Swinney has gotten voters, his waters of penalties, uh, merits, and that's violations. As, you know, stated, kind of, this is in prison, it was thirty, thirty-five, a dollar on the road, in my court, the name, right, where the stuff, others, the, 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 also, so. The thing is, there's a civil penalty, of five hundred dollars, if a person fails to pay this civil penalty, and that is, our bedside violation, and they say, to be held, they're going to follow this pledge, in the nature, nature of the state.
Look at Bible, um, it says, the availability and collection fees shall be assessed by the, uh, screen county tax assessor, so, and the tax collector. She would determine, if it's a business, what size it is, and then assess the, the yearly fee.
And then, I think it should be all, and, 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 whatever, uh, tax, tax, like, actually, um. Garnish. What's that? I don't know, absolutely.
Because it's made. Garnish wages.
It's just like P M S, baby.
Down to what? I, I was signed the end of garnish, the ticket phase, years ago, and for that strip phase, we just had a idea, we, we would get a collective, but we were, we could go into the, um. Garnish act, you know, in your, in the system, and garnish for sanitation. We should have seen a copy of everything.
I need a tax, you call me, but.
Cause we need something that's not just kind of real rock.
Swinney County one is more closely to ours. Yeah.
Why they gonna shut Thursday, they, um. They have it on, uh, I don't see, it's actually, I didn't work with more than, and that was actually, how, uh. Long the fence, and, 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 it was something I had. Everybody's, oh. And, Greg, it started going away, I'm hoping we can get, this is, this is, okay, Jay?
Him said, well, go, that's a lot, well, uh, that would be the toy, I'm actually, I'm just gonna, like, uh. Just something to check your, uh, they, for the arrow, way over, see, so, I see, he's actually talking, that's, well, third, and, and, oh, yes, it's, uh. Because our toy, you know, it's made on their land, and it's taking, at least thirty pennies, if you cleaned up, I think, you're gonna have to, probably, long, because, yeah, I did that once, for, to help me out, but. He can't, the case, that's on the clock, if he doesn't, the trash everywhere.
Yeah, right.
They get the, they get the, twelve, thirty-four, like, that, that's, don't worry about it, I said, I'll, I'll, no.
So, that's, Brian, got a toy.
Well, it's.
Well, it's, she's taking these.
They're using.
Yeah, and you actually do that, if I, if I were to use my last church, that's, that's my biggest problem, so, we should, we didn't have to. I'm, I'm sorry to roll, that's my biggest charge.
I mean, that's, I'm pretty stupid, not with him.
But, wait. She has, we get five, our own.
I was laying on the floor, playing in the sand.
That is seven. On Sundays.
And he said, out of five, maybe, really, now, five was explaining to come in, and he said, I asked him, because, it's kind of tough, like, you, you want our, I think. But he did, I had to say that, he said, out of five, he really had to, five was explaining to me, so. They go, like, church, and they go, oh, my church, so, he didn't put the old time, he's going, having, uh. I, so. What if it's like, you know, it's loaded with a judge, and then.
Most people, if they're checking out of the Airbnb or whatever, they're gonna check out by eleven, so if the site was opened by eleven, or at eleven, they would have a place to take it. That's what I was kind of thinking.
I feel like it, for Airbnb, you shouldn't be just contracted, or, you know. That's just me, I wish it were a car, which makes, it's just, yes, I mean, helps their guests, and it helps those, um.
Why don't we do both? Why don't you open it at eleven?
Yeah.
Be flexible, I like Gavin saying, be flexible. Try eleven, how much better is, there are only two, three bags that propagate, versus a hundred, because everybody's getting out, checking out at ten, thirty, eleven, how many, and then, I think that somebody needs to communicate with your tourist, because, touring people. Sounds like they don't even know what's going on, so, let, let's watch, just try communications to the tourism people, and then, and talk to, to, who isn't that talks to all these rental, renters, who they don't know. Like, a lot of them, uh.
Well, uh, the travel and tourism, uh, authority could help some, with that, that is, that is a good idea. So, they have a list, or, to go and pass along the recognition. And let, let the visitors know what hours, I don't think, I'm interviewing.
Takes, you know, costs a whole lot, and flexing your hours, see what works best, doesn't cost, a whole lot.
We can get that information out by email, or, um, Facebook, or, uh, how, um, we can get communication out to our visitors here. But, um, I haven't, I haven't spoken to anybody at Travel and Tourism without that, but that would be a service that we definitely need to offer them anyway.
Well, that brings up another thing, you know, we, we don't have a clue how many businesses and who they are in Gray County. So, people that have been coming in here, they call me and they say, I need to get a business license, but we don't have one. So, that's another way that you can bring in revenue for these businesses that have been, I mean, we're gonna, it, it just keeps spinning off, but, I mean, it's the truth, I don't know, I don't have a listing of all those.
Yeah, we give this a list, and, yeah.
They got the Airbnb, the B R E, and the stewardship, uh. Great, but if you choose to do one in your county, then you definitely know what the business was. I'm just trying to think about the taxes, we go down for any revenue we can charge.
You have to track the purposes as well, and some of them probably may not hold the process, but, we don't, the tracking process as well, like, you know, I really.
Like, it's not. Really, again, this, uh, you know, like, the register. That's, that's, it's, so, she had to do that, you lost it.
Sign the requirements.
I don't know, that, that, college, that, that's something, you went to the tax office, and they fill out a form, and you send things, and you go to the, to the, to the, to the.
Well, we have to, you listed your business property, your personal property, so we, we have to find the business, and then we go, get, send the tax assessor out, and then she picks up. The pro, the personal property.
This can all, that's a, uh, oh, shoot. It is, it's. What we need to do, to be able to get this enacted, cause that's a business practice, you know, but.
You could have an ordinance for that, too?
I mean, it's, and it's a way to help them, in a way, to, to make an accident, a, a, a trial, so.
It does go to, it, it restarts, it's, it's more, what you, I mean. And then there's at least a formal registry, I mean, just, why?
Most of those are the, um, we got.
We used to have years ago, I mean.
I probably still have to.
We could get it together.
It was the mid twenty teens, I think. I think it was mid twenty teens, the last time they had one here, like, early twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
From that, was, uh, they tried, uh. I'm gonna say, or something, point ninety-eight.
Wow.
Yeah, I think you're there, and you should, that, that's all I asked, uh. But, that's, they, they won't have to do it.
I'm just, I'm just remembering that's a long, gotta travel. Did it have to pay a lot of, uh?
That, that would be the start of Chamber of Commerce here, that's whenever, do you remember when, party business, closed, Saturday, on Wednesday? That would be where, uh, original Chamber of Commerce, if I get enough, third years, or something.
Would, like, that?
It's almost there, I think, you're down, nine o'clock, nine, which, hey, called all the meetings, all the log games, coming in, instead of toilet, and, blah.
Not everybody would, no.
So everybody was, dog. Roy, we only got a fifteen minute.
How about this?
Yes, sir.
We can continue, I feel like.
Yeah, we could come to him or, um. Throw the yellow one out, and, uh, are we allowed to do that, Jay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it needs some simpler wording, that way there's no confusion about what you are going to do or not going to do.
With this, I wish, I think, you still have enough teeth in that, for. They realize when I'm. You know, they almost said. No, I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
I can, if I get a little more instruction about what it is you want to. I mean, do. Well, the enforcement's the key to it, it's not worth a paper, it's written on, if there's not an enforcement provision. I mean, why have it for not to enforce it?
And that's where this kind of has, because we have people.
And there's two kinds of enforcement, one is the enforcement, um, for violation, and, and the other is the, the enforcement on site. I mean, that's. You know, how are you going to enforce it on site, that's, that's a whole different subject, I think, but I think it's got to be addressed.
They'll be at Spain inside, they'll be. Signed, they're going to do that, or that tower, calling, about these.
Could.
I think it should be provided.
Yeah, I know, in the case where the guy's bringing all the.
Right. He said, love, you love it.
So you should, you guys, hey, you're going to, you'll see, guys, about the ticket, so you guys.
This, this, they're in the base, they're in the, uh. Call.
It's like, I, that's, that's.
Yeah.
I was going to tell you, I mean, that one, I was like. Everybody out there, I don't want to be a cop.
Basically, you can do it.
You don't even walk out.
Like, if I take the picture, and then you price it in rapid sanitation, and there is delivered to that person.
That could be done.
Later.
Yeah.
That would be on, or.
There, there will be no fun.
I had a man take a dollar strip, it's key, it's, it's a dollar for the record. Over asking, like, if we're going to find, get, 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 dress, go, no, no. Image, wow, his kids, maybe, grand man, a hundred dollars in trip, it was on, we had it on, three, four, wow.
Once we have it on camera, the violation can be written, turned into the appropriate person. And then sent certified to the violator. And then we follow up with enforcement, whatever, that's not a bad.
Just need a license tag, no. That's so hard to enforce it.
Yeah, I don't like it.
He should have.
Well, I mean, I can't get, I would say, self, I'll put a tag in on the person, and if they caught it, and they are back, or not being, same to you, I, this is what I thought. This is a tag, this is a person. Who would want to do it?
Without even talking to.
What, to interact with that person, especially if that person seems reasonable, and reasonable, and was just, hey, this is what I did, this is what I thought, this is, this is a fact.
As, as you all says, we have, like, how, if I have the. That. Sometimes we got this. As anybody offers it, in other words, outside. Two one out of state, and kind of, and they're taking the guards, fix the duty, but they often pay, how they often.
Not, nobody's telling me to stop.
Because I, I was asking today, if somebody. Using the service side of our, just like, pull in, and they were out of state, do they ask? The doctor, it's painful, or you got, or do they list that, and then one.
It is, yeah, well, you don't really know who's out of state, you know, because they've been in Florida, been in Georgia, they're all over, about half a year, so, you don't need. You know, that some kind of sticker on the land, or some kind of card, you don't, you don't really know.
But just the license plate.
Hey, man, if they got a route license, if they're in Miami, Georgia, or wherever, Florida, that's the one, that's. There, there's someone that's sure that they probably already attached. They're that. I don't know if it'd be enough, anything where it was. Time you can do.
Maybe you just cut out the, the whole stuff, and, and, you know. I think that's not where our money's at.
Doesn't have to be twenty-eight. And that is, well, just advise, not really, that's, thirty minutes later, but shit, they had. You know, now, you know, reason, my question, I'll.
You remember back in, during COVID, didn't Graham County have a sticker that people had to have on their car in order to get into?
We printed.
County?
We printed them all.
I mean, that was pretty effective, wasn't it?
Yeah, we just had them put it in their, um, windshield, in there.
If, if they had one of those in their windshield, then they wouldn't have to pay. If they didn't have one in their windshield, you could tell the person who rolled up, who's not a resident, you have to pay.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, um, if you're a taxpayer, you're paying taxes, you got a little window sticker. Goes in, that you're Graham County resident, or Graham County property tax office. And if that was in your vehicle, then you're fine.
Uh huh.
If you didn't have it, it, and type, you don't live here, they charge, you know.
So what if you're a rich person, you're not going to remember? See, you pay two dollars back like I do with G S A.
You see, when I have a sticker, so I can probably pay it.
That is, yeah, it's a dollar five, five, two dollars to be, over. They have wiped up my dirty gear, it says, it says, get somebody to pick you up once in a while. Where he's got, he's got one place to go, there's, like, eight hours of that, and then I ain't, I ain't, I don't do that.
Okay, so do we want to re-implement the sticker? Uh, plan for taxpayers in this county? I think that's, that's a good idea, that will cover a lot of them. And the ones that don't have a sticker, then should pay for it.
Yeah, you want to go to color, they put the bill. Got the sticker, they'll say, I'm giving, trading all the time, it's a bit like, we all got stickers.
I mean, realistically, I think if it's worked, if, 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 you know, we were to help, we would have to come, so that you can have a good, a safe. And you just spell for people who break the rules, like, well, apparently, and prove someone is wrong, and make a stick. I think that. I don't know, do we have to come and party?
That should solve the problem. Do you, you guys have any thoughts? I have a question about the stickers, if you did that for COVID, then you gave it to everybody, whether they were renting or property owners, right?
I think that was more for just the out of town people that didn't have local drivers, like, you were.
Work, if you work that side of the county.
Yeah, yeah.
That's.
Well, I mean, because we're retired, and we had widely, because we're going back and forth, we were proud, and I was, but I don't think you should be punishing renters, like, this. Uh, I mean, if you're renting, you probably are, you're having a pretty hard time. I think you should trust us, some people never act, goodbye, maybe, the rules. And that's, oh, we should.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So, just start with that plan and go forward.
Well, residents, so, have to get all.
Why?
We may not figure out this money, do it on the stage.
I've printed two driver's licenses, or your license plate on your car, and if you don't have any, you're.
I've got a big lemonade machine, it'd be cheaper on me, just to give them a card, that they'll be able to. That you're a resident, or that. You have a robust ability to race. If you go, to a team that doesn't know you, have us know everybody, and then they can show them the car.
This requires, I don't know, we'll be over, let's be all, rather than they only first. And maybe, but they're on the city of war, the call.
True.
If we can keep her, keep it as. Um, unintensive on the labor side, one, um, options are good.
Just have it fixed before they came, members.
You know.
So what, see, protect all the vehicle? This is tax, this is the fact. What they said, that's the fact, well, that the tax law is, so.
So, what, where, what is there for it?
What we got is a police charge. Yeah, police. Or it's how we can actually apply those, uh, like, she's been on these. How we will charge, for what? When it's a market violation. Look, and the ordinance is kind of, you know, say. Well, I'll check with the district attorney. And see if she will put out the word to her assistants who would be prosecuting if people violate their ordinance. Because that is North Carolina law, violation of a county ordinance can be, can be baited into a misdemeanor.
So, uh, our plan for gathering information is. Good, and me again?
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, hello, hello. You're going to take us to pull everything together that we need.
I don't know, do I, how long you need? Um, um. Well, I'm not going to be here in August, but I'll be, I'll be back in September. So I can work on it in the meantime.
Give us that.
Yeah. Anyways.
This one will need to call an emergency meeting, one of your clubs, this one, the kids are okay with it, or, um, urgent care contract.
Actually, turn your.
So, thank you all who come, I really appreciate it.